Bring the meeting to order. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes from October 8th, 2025. There is one change that needs to be done, adding Brent Smith to the attendance part of it. Other than that, it all looks good, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
With the addition of Brent?
With the addition of Brent.
Second.
Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, stayed.
Yep, okay.
Doesn't happen.
Adjustments to the agenda. Steve, you've got?
Yeah, it's a grant for fire ward and stuff because the state has changed the way that the 50/50 purchase happens. It's not, they didn't do it the same way. Do you want me to talk about it all now?
Well, we'll bring it, we'll just make that and bring it up later, okay?
Yeah, okay.
All right, so you could add Steve to the agenda.
Well, he can just go on the fire fast. Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll put you, all right. All right, Tom, any update on the?
I've been doing research on what I've got to get done, but I don't really have any update as far as anything concrete that's happened yet. It's just a bunch of paperwork that's got to be done.
All right, so the Sheriff's Department's all done there?
That part's all done, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the MERP bid summary?
Yeah. Hey, Mike. Me.
He's good.
He is there, yeah.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep. But you're closer to the microphone now.
Wow, it's like 3D vision here with that blurred background.
Shut it off.
So, I guess the question is, I mean, Dennis and I pulled together some recommendations kind of based on going, looking at the bids that have come in, going back with follow-on questions, kind of thinking about it further. I don't like you put some time into sort of sharing your thoughts and digging into it as well. I guess the question is, do we want to start there or should we start with some of the recommendations?
Do you guys have any preference or?
I don't have a preference. You?
I, no, I mean, I guess either, either way.
Okay, so why don't we start with the recommendations? Dennis, I don't know if you had a chance to print things out?
I did, everybody's got it.
Got it. So, yeah, I think the, the net, I mean, the, the big issue about some of the bids that came in were just some of the numbers that we were seeing. I, I don't think we anticipated that level of cost to work in the amendment that we had requested for the wood pellet stoves. I think general gist of things from talking to other towns and stuff like that is that prices and costs are significantly up over a year and a half ago when the assessments were getting done. And I think what it's kind of caused us to do is sort of step back and go back to the core principles of what the MERP grant was, was about in terms of building municipal resiliency on an energy front. And sort of, you know, to fund projects that will lower energy use, operating costs, that sort of thing. So, you know, to make something pretty, I, I think the challenge is unless the town's going to want to kind of ante up at this stage to make up the difference, I think we just need to think about how we scale back. And so, what we kind of looked at was what was the original grant for, what are some of the key items, I think, that are reported BGS? And how do we take this and move it to a path forward in terms of, you know, what we can execute and get done? So, the first one, the first point that we've kind of pulled together is to kind of proceed with the core priorities. There's a spreadsheet in there that kind of looks at the different bids. And what we're proposing is we kind of move forward with community building, we move out the pellet stove amendment and table that for now. I think there's a path going forward where with additional BGS funds coming available, which is kind of on the table, about 10 days ago it popped up, as in, as something that could be out there given all the other towns, or at least the number of towns that are struggling to execute and get their MERP grants deployed and funded. So defer the boiler replacement for now in the community building. In the fire station, defer the on-demand water heater, which was another amendment that got added from talking with the fire station, sort of, sort of their use of things. In reality, an on-demand water heater, once we had contractors in, isn't going to cut it in terms of pressure. And then defer the lighting, the lighting numbers were really high, I think 19,000, move to LED lighting controls, defer that for now and figure out a lower cost solution for that. So that's kind of like our recommended, recommended step number one. I think all of that stuff needs to be confirmed with BGS to make sure that they are cool with that and it meets what they're trying to accomplish or have towns accomplish. So we'd be going back into them and getting the okay to kind of make these adjustments. And I think we have a strong case for that, given we've got market data kind of coming in on things in terms of bids. Not every town is seeing bids right now either. Number two, kind of looking at the contractors, I think we've got really two options. One is Efficiency Vermont came back with some good suggestions about maybe using this time to bring the, the folks, the contractors that had bitted on things back into the buildings, kind of have them explain what they're doing and kind of lay it out as another layer. It would probably add another two weeks to the process. The upside, we have much, probably a lot more clarity than what we're getting from some of the bids that have come in in terms of what, what they envision and what they're doing. That said, if we want to move forward tonight, you know, our leanings are to move forward with the Mountaineer Systems proposal. They can't do it all. They, CX kind of came back and said they've got the sort of, the lower cost bid, relatively speaking. I think we've had good interactions with them, good interactions with both vendors, but if we had to choose one today, we'd recommend Mountaineer Systems. And then just issue new RFPs for the building envelope or electrical updates, upgrades and stuff they can't do. On the fire station, if a decision needs to be made tonight, proceed, the recommendation would be proceed with Mountaineer Systems again and ditto on the new RFPs and that, except for you can strike that electrical update upgrade, it's not needed in the fire station. Town garage, move forward with Party and their bid. And then solar battery backup, EV infrastructure, I think, all, all, well, three of the four that have come in have been really supportive and interactive and quick to respond. I think to Dennis and I, it's, you know, a toss-up between Catamount Solar or Green Mountain Solar. And then step three of the recommendation is, you know, just putting our head down and executing and getting this stuff done. I mean, we're 14, 13, 14 months in since the application went in, you know, we still seem to be debating different aspects of what we're doing. And I think there's some good stuff there in terms of enlightenment, but I also think we're revisiting things that I think some of us thought would have wrapped up a couple months ago. But the idea here is let's just get some stuff done, build and continue to build some great relationships with the partners that we've been working with here. And I think most importantly is kind of get a track record going of actually delivering on the MERP objectives. I sense that if we play this right, well, and execute well, that we can be in a, in a good position to possibly get additional MERP funds as they become available and it probably won't be till second half of next year. But that's something that NVDA, NVDA shared, so it's a little bit of a shift and I, I think our opportunity is to be a great MERP citizen and put our position in for, excuse me, sort of be in position so that if we can get another 20 or 100,000 or whatever, that we're a strong candidate to receive that additional funding. Recommendation four, if that was, well, after three is to sort of, you know, get this first phase of stuff done and reassess what we can do next. You know, I think the MERP budget, I think if we stick to these recommendations, I think we'll probably be in the ballpark of 35 to 55K sort of remaining onto that budget. The solar will deliver 25 to 37,000 in terms of correct pay, go back in. And then, you know, the question is, you know, what is BGS going to have available and how do we sort of rank and set and stand in terms of receiving some of those additional funds? We don't know, but I think we're probably looking at 60 to 90, 95 through these other two components of additional funds that can come later. And I do think that, you know, just based on our conversations with BGS, I know we went with pellet on this option for the boiler, I do think they definitely seemed a little, a little bit open to propane as well. So I think this could give us a, an opportunity to revisit wood pellet versus propane if we choose to do so. And then the fifth thing is, you know, and I've mentioned this once or twice before, you know, solar's going to deliver 10 to 15K in annual energy savings every year. That's in current dollars, not future dollars. Inflation isn't going away, it's getting worse right now. Energy costs aren't going down, they're going up, given some other macro stuff in, out there in the world in terms of impacting the demand on electricity. I think there's a great opportunity here to protect ourselves, protect the town, to cover future costs by creating a self-sustaining sort of energy reserve fund where we allocate a certain percentage of savings, we use that to cover maintenance, we use it to cover equipment costs, and we set ourselves up strongly for the next couple of decades in terms of being financially protected with respect to energy costs. And I think if we do the, the above, I, I think, you know, and this is a little bit uncertain because we don't know the BGS funds, but I think there's a, a good possibility that we put ourselves to do all of the above in terms of what we originally kind of put out into the RFP world. If we can secure those additional BGS funds or, you know, maybe it costs some additional money if we downgrade to a propane, but we put a big dent in that, I think, besides protecting the town against future energy costs and increases in that area, you know, there's, the, the solar's going to be saving the town somewhere, and we won't know until we see the real data, but somewhere between 160 and 300K, 300,000 over the next 20 years. That's in current dollars. My guess is in 10 years, energy costs are going to be a lot higher than they are now, so I think there's more upside on that. And I think that reserve fund, again, just sort of puts us, because this can be self-funded through the savings generated by this program, puts us in a, a good position to kind of protect the town, the town in the long term in terms of financial costs, so. So that's a long-winded way of kind of, I guess, sharing some of our recommendations, that spreadsheet as well to give you additional clarity. What we did was sort of looked at the different bids that came in and then kind of using the Mountaineer Systems numbers and where Mountaineer didn't do any things, didn't provide any, any numbers, we kind of lifted just to have placeholders or ballpark figures, the state numbers and worked them into the column. Those numbers are in italics, just to give us an idea of what this would cost us. And the total number to move forward with what we're recommending is about, it looks like the cost is $200,000. There could be some unexpected things obviously that pop up. And solar, I think, and I can let Dennis jump in on that, but it's probably sitting around 28, 90K. So that's 290 plus the 40-ish, let's say, that we've spent already, kind of puts us in around 330 of our 330, 340 of our $397,000 grant. And it would be nice to kind of operate with some flexibility. There's been some things that popped up with the town garage need doors in terms of additional work needed to put those things in properly long-term. So having, you know, an additional, some additional buffer there to kind of absorb the unexpected expenses that will probably crop up, I think is a good. Dennis, I don't know if you want to jump in quickly on solar or if we should just sort of table it for now?
Yeah, there's, yeah, so there is a hint on solar as well, just comparing, we got four quotes. We kind of disregarded one from Sterling Mountain Solar because they didn't do the required site visit that was, that we requested over, but, so it really came down to Catamount, Green Mountain and Sun Common. It took a little time, they came in with kind of different sized array, it's, and I went back and asked Green Mountain and Catamount to kind of come in around 30 kilowatt programs like Sun Common had, seemed to be kind of in the middle. And so when we kind of condensed all of that, Green Mountain and Catamount are like $55 apart in their quotes. And that includes the, the, both the town garage and the community building comes up to 88,000, $95 after the federal elective pay at 30%. And Green Mountain Solar is 88, 151. Similar warranties, similar production, similar numbers of panels, that kind of thing. Good references from all of them. So it really cut, and Sun Common came in about, about eight grand higher than the other two. So we're comfortable with either recommending Catamount or Green Mountain Solar.
All right, any comments?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. And Carrie, Carrie shared that historical overview submittal that we submitted with Shippo, I think. There wasn't, I didn't see a plan that was submitted with it, but did it include solar? Because in the discussion, it doesn't include any discussion on solar.
It did, it did include solar and we were signing off.
Did it include the placement of the panels or?
Just so they were kind of, didn't, didn't ask all the, that.
Because it's not explained in the, in what Carrie shared with me.
Yeah, that was the only thing I had. Was what I shared was the.
Yeah, I didn't print it out, I guess I did.
We can resubmit it with pictures. We got pictures from both Catamount and Green Mountain Solar of what it would look like. They didn't really find solar quite significant in the, other than the age.
Here's the, here's the one thing I had.
Yeah, what did?
It's the only.
That was one, one of my concerns because it just says, please provide a short description of the project, building to have exterior foundation, level insulation, upgrades on north and west sides, heat pump units on west side. So there, I didn't see any mention of solar, so I was concerned that we didn't ask.
All right, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't ask. I thought I did. And I was responding to what they said, what they wanted, but we can resubmit that.
Yeah, I think it's definitely prudent to submit it with a plan if that's, if that's something we're interested in. The other thing is, it may not be an established historic district that we have here in Groton, but we're considered like a potential historic district, which is a historic downtown. And so they, what I read, and this is looking at the Silly House transaction actually, was that they grade your district based on the historical significance of the buildings. And so they'll look at a building and say, well, this is the original building, original roof, original this, and they'll say that's a historic asset in the district. What they do take away is when you do upgrade buildings and they're not historically accurate anymore. So that's the sort of things they're looking for. You might get comments back about the roof or about the, the solar panels potentially facing the village, is what I've seen like other, other municipalities having issues where, you know, the panels had to face the back, you know, not towards the village. I'm not sure we'll have that sort of comment from them because we're not like an established historic district, but they look at it through the lens of this is a potential historic district. And so they may say that, you know, whatever you're doing is going to take away from the view shed or, you know, to, I think we should, if we do go solar, we should resubmit. Let's see. Couple of things, I mean, there's really only one contractor, Mike, who would come back for, you know, that Efficiency Vermont recommendation to do a site walk. It's Spates, it's that one contractor. I mean, no one else bid on anything else and Parity is clearly the, you know, who you would pick for the garage. And they didn't bid on the community, on the community building or the fire department, so we can't invite them to come in and, and look at a project that we're, they didn't bid on, I guess, if that makes sense. So Parity would not be able to come to the fire department or the community building because they didn't bid on the project.
No question.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they're, I mean, that's referring to Mountaineer and it's referring to Spates and it's really around, it's not so much about building envelope stuff as it is about heat pumps. And to walk us through and.
But so Spates is using a subcontractor though, I mean, I would just bid this out to heating companies then instead of paying Pates whatever, 20%, 30%, 40% markup, we, we.
I'm not recommending we go with Spates, so.
Well, the, the site walk thing just, it didn't make sense to me because the only person that would show up is Spates. And he's subbing out all this work, except the weatherization work.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sure Mountaineer would show up, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know why you would assume that they're not.
I, I thought it was for the weatherization part, I forgot Mountaineer.
No, I, I don't think the weatherization is, you know, as, I guess, as tricky or as, I think bringing more insight and commentary and context around what they would be doing in some of the HVAC stuff is, I think, what we, if we need to address anything by a revisit, it's that.
So let me ask you a question. I, I'll just share with everyone in the room that I put together a proposal that excludes the heat pumps in the soil, in the solar. So the proposal I chose was, I, I looked through these bids and tried to figure out where we can get like the most bang for our buck or where we could take care of sort of pressing needs that we have. One of the things that CX associates in their energy assessment found is that the heating plant in this building was in poor condition. 28 years old. And, you know, in, in the scheme that Mike just proposed, it would be the heating tank, the fuel oil tank or furnace would be heating just the gym and then heat pumps would be doing the heating in the other parts of the building and they'd be switching. And then there would be like a switch outside, so if it got too cold for the heat pumps, it would switch all over to the oil for the whole building. We're still relying on a pretty old furnace and, and I guess my concern for the taxpayers in town is we have an opportunity to propose to BGS replacing our furnace at a very expensive cost, which is up within the same amount we would spend if we had to replace it on our own. It, I have concerns about the 28-year-old furnace in poor condition going forward as a, as a backup plan or as the sort of backup. So my, my thinking was, we have this opportunity to put a brand-new heat plant in the building here. And it's a huge upgrade, it's something, if it came up and we didn't have funding, we'd be sitting here scratching our heads trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And so it's, it's a pretty big opportunity in my mind. The, the oil in the basement, I, some of you might know, I was a storage tank section supervisor for the state of Vermont for two and a half years, I was on the skill response team for four and a half years. Oil is a major hazard, oil is a major liability, you've seen it all in Wells River, they're dealing with contaminated, contaminated wells and retraction water. And we don't have a public water system here, and another thing oil does is it gets into soil vapor and gets into people's homes. So the other, other disruptive thing it could do is spill into the community building and you'll, you'll lose this building for a little while as you clean it up. We also pay more insurance because we have 500 gallons of oil in the basement. The tanks are old and the tanks are manifold in a non, non-standard way. So looking at the manifold on their tanks, there's supposed to be two vents going out of the building. In our case, we've got a vent going to the other tank, so it's venting into the other tank and then out. And that, these spills happen from that all the time. So there, there's several issues, I think, with the, the heating plant as it stands. And so I guess I look at the, the additional grant opportunities that Mike mentioned down the road as actually the opportunity to put solar and heat pumps in. And I see this grant opportunity as the one to replace our furnace. And that option is on the table with bids right now. So it's, it's there, it's, it's a, the, the option I was going for was the pellet with the propane back that we had sort of discussed. So, so the, the oil tank issue is a really, is a, is to me and the oil furnace is, is a pretty significant concern. You know, if this were my house, I'd replace the more expensive item first. Dan?
Yeah, as a person that's a taxpayer in the town, I'd rather see the heating system upgraded before anything else is done, plus button the building out. The other thing is a person that has installed many, many heat pumps, they are not the best option. You have to heat from top down, blows the heat down, goes right back up. For this type of a building, it's not the best option, in my opinion. A new heat system, propane backup, you're going to save money overall and it's going to be good for a long term of the project. Whereas if you don't do the furnace now, the furnace is 28 years old, if it goes down, you still have a major cost coming that's not going to be funded. And it could happen at an inopportune time and it would really stick the town. So in, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, I'd rather see the heating source here upgraded, have the button, have the building buttoned out and do the necessary things here first and then go to the other projects as it comes down the line. I think it's proven, I think it's financially proven to do that.
Yeah, and so one thing I've tried to do is, is sort of prioritize everything in the MERP recommendation, so in the reports themselves. the MERC recommendation, so in the reports themselves. Um, and I also checked a couple other towns' MERC reports, because I was concerned that it was just sort of written off, that we have a poor heating plant and that we're just gonna go ahead and continue to use it. And I did notice that other towns are, there's Norwich, and I could go with it, I wanna say Bridgewater. Like Norwich is getting a wood pellet furnace to replace their, 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 uh, oil system, you know, so these are things that are happening with these grant funding. Um, and then I looked at another MERC report where they said, your system's in poor condition, we recommend replacing the furnace. I don't know if the town went forward with doing that. But in reading the report, I, I guess I was a little surprised that our report just sort of brushed over the fact that we have a poor heating plant, um, and, and, you know, uh, yeah, it was a concern of mine. Um, one of the things I definitely value is the, all the weatherization upgrades, uh, except one. Um, one, I, I mean, the LED lighting, I think is a good thing. Uh, the nineteen thousand dollar bid, we would never, ever, I would never go yes for that, ever. Uh, we'll never accept that. Um, but I, I think the, the only one I saw that was like in reading the report that I thought was ticky tacky was the foundation repair at the garage. The foundation insulation repair. There's, so the garage is, is on a concrete pad and there's insulation on the side. It's a modern pad. This is what they do when you pour concrete now. Uh, it's just chipped away at the edges and they're calling for it to be dug out and replaced, and it seems to me like overkill for a garage. Uh, I have it in the proposal. I just sort of put it in there just to say I hit them all, but if there's something that can go, it's, it's that.
Well, it's more than being chipped away. There's parts of it that are just missing.
Yeah.
So there's more. It's basically been hit by the weed here over the years.
I mean, it's unoccupied. It's just to be, I, it, it can happen. I think, I think with this proposal, we, we could do it. Uh, but, but looking at it, it just seemed to me like, you know, it's, if it didn't have it at all, maybe a good idea to put it in, but um, that, when they install that, it's down the whole length of the slab. I, I watched it, uh, get installed for my garage and, uh, just seemed like something maybe we didn't have to do. Uh, the other concerns I have were, we're really still using oil. It's not really becoming a backup system. It's heating the entire gym. Uh, and the gym's huge. It's probably the bulk of the building. So like it's, yeah, I tried to, you know, we're really are still using oil a lot, um, and during cold times, uh, if, if we keep the old oil furnace. Um, then I'm extremely concerned about maintenance and cleaning and, uh, upkeep, uh, insurance, liabilities, ongoing costs, uh.
Where did you get those maintenance?
Can I please explain the maintenance numbers to everyone in the room?
Yeah, of course.
So, um, we're talking about sixty-nine new solar panels on the roof of the building. Three batteries inside, five thousand dollar batteries. Uh, twelve new heating appliances, uh, so it's nine indoor units and three outdoor units for the heat pumps. Uh, and that's just in this building alone. Uh, the equipment needs regular maintenance, cleaning, filter replacements, as well as ma- major maintenance when needed. Uh, heat pumps need more frequent maintenance than a simple furnace. This is online. Uh, costs, so I put in our system, uh, and I got a cost about, let's see, what was this for? About a thousand a year for the heat pumps, and then major maintenance needed between years ten and fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand dollars for repairs to sensors, coils and things. Um, the other concern I have. So again, um, all these new things on the building, now they must be insured, cleaned, inspected, maintained, replaced in the future. Uh, so it's a lot of, a lot of new infrastructure. Uh, we, we currently have a furnace and, you know, that's pretty much it. Uh, so to go to twelve heat pumps, sixty, sixty-nine solar panels, um, on the solar panels alone, we're looking at six to seven thousand dollars a year just for maintenance, cleaning, inspections. Um, I looked up.
Mike, Mike, where are you getting those numbers? I mean, I've had panels for seven years and I've spent zero.
Your panels aren't three stories up and they're not in the middle of the town and uh, I got those numbers like on, on, online. The, the internet is an incredible resource. I put in, I put.
The internet will tell you anything. The question is, is it a valid, what, what's the?
I still, I still haven't answered your question, Mike. And, and I still haven't answered your question either. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Uh, I put in the size of our system, how many panels, how many kilowatts, I put how many batteries into AI, and I went through and I read, and then I went and checked the links and I read further. And I came up with what I think is actually probably in the ballpark of what we pay. They're worth much higher costs and they're slightly lower cost, but I cho- I chose to pick, uh, something sort of in the middle. Um, and, and that's what I got. So six to seven thousand dollars a year on the, on the solar panels. And for the heat pump system, I thought we should reserve, and these, this is what I think we should reserve for months of funding. This isn't what we're gonna call, but this is when we're building our budget and we now have sixty-nine solar panels on the roof, three batteries in the basement.
Two.
Whatever it is, two here, one there. Uh, same, same difference at this point. Um, I think we, if six to seven thousand dollars just for the solar panel maintenance alone, and then three to four thousand dollars for heat pump system, uh.
Yeah, I, I think we need to talk to people. I mean, my number is zero in my head based on real life, um, and I know it's smaller scale, so I think probably would behoove us to get off of ChatGPT and take a look and maybe talk to some other towns that have done this and, and get a real number from them.
I can tell you from personal experience of my solar panels, they're not worth what I'm paying for them. And I had one instance that cost me seven thousand dollars. So it does happen in the real world that you do need maintenance costs for these things. They have to be upgraded and they do have failures. So don't think you're going into this, but it's gonna last for thirty years and be wonderful. It's not my experience.
Legitimate number, so that's all.
Okay, well, I'm the only one apparently that came to the table with a number. You have zero. Yeah.
I don't have sixty. I have thirty-four.
You, you, you came with that number. I came with what, what I found online and I did a lot of research. It's not just I put this in ChatGPT. I, I checked a lot of different things.
I'm not saying you're wrong, you know, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm saying as someone who's gonna be. Well, I'm just saying that, sure, if I were to build a budget and have these things, this is what I found, okay? So.
But Mike, you're overstating. There was never an incentive for nine heat pumps. It was CX, um, made a mistake in their proposal that we didn't catch. The only areas that were planned for heat pumps were the assessor's office, town clerk's office and treasurer's office, which were gonna be handled by one or two outside units and, and a unit inside for each of those areas.
Was that in the bids I reviewed or?
No, they bid nine, but then, but then that falls back to the original idea of needing the furnace to be upgraded. So there'd be no new heat all through here, so.
But the bids all say nine.
I can see that the furnace would be the first place to start.
I mean, they, I, I was basing this up.
When I left, we were talking.
I mean, I, I have the bids right here. They, they, they call, it said.
I know, and I tried, I gave an email to all of you.
Yeah, three outdoor units, nine indoor units.
We're not looking at nine heat pumps.
So then why are we awarding this to MAS at the price that they quoted for nine and?
Well, I think we have to go back and talk a lot about that.
We, we haven't awarded it. You guys.
So the dollar amount here is for twelve. This sixty-nine, nine, I figured that's what it was, and this is what you have on here. They're saying move forward with MAS is for nine indoor units. They said specifically what they were and three exterior. That's what I reviewed. So I, if it was buried in some note somewhere that it should be something else, our contractors didn't see it and they didn't bid on that and so for consideration of what we're doing, I, I used what they provided for bids. So I don't know what it then.
But either way, if, if, even if it drops to the three heat pumps, we're still back to needing a furnace to heat this whole building.
Yeah.
Majority of the time. And I, I guess I'm agreeing with Mike saying that that's where we start with this funding.
Heat pumps are not gonna work below thirteen below anyways. They're gonna be shut down. Compressors will shut down to save themselves.
Is that five degrees, I think?
Thirteen now. If you buy, well, yeah, there's five for the basic ones.
Plus you get into cost. They're not that efficient at below five degrees.
No, they're not. They're not efficient in my estimation. They're not efficient.
Just having this big chunk of money and use that on the most expensive thing and then funding, like you're saying, comes available, then those costs are less, with most likely less, a lower amount of funding.
Yeah. Alright, so it's three, whatever it is, I'm still buried. That is my number one concern is the oil, oil tank system. Uh, you know, even the, the, the numbers you mentioned for money coming down the pipe, Mike, wasn't enough to cover a replacement either. You know, I, I think I wrote in my notes here somewhere.
You're not taking into account any potential BGS, Mike.
No, no, the BGS money you mentioned. You said there was another twenty-five to a hundred thousand coming down the road, but that doesn't.
We don't know, Mike, we don't know. The, I mean, you know, all we have heard is that BGS now plans to redistribute unused funds, okay? So we don't know what that dollar amount is. You know, we think we're gonna be in a sixty to ninety K money left in terms of leftover budget and in terms of any direct pay money coming back, okay? Um, but I don't know what the BGS number is, um, you know, and a- again, it seems like, you know, a year ago when we put the application in, we left over a hundred thousand dollars on the table here that we could have applied for. Alright, because nobody flagged the oil tanks and nobody flagged the, you know, the boilers and things like that. And I, I, I only say that, um, you know, because it, it gets challenging to kind of work through this stuff when, you know, it's like the opportunity's been put on the table. And, you know, I think we can get another eighty or a hundred K, but it was there for us and we didn't go after it as a town. And I, I say that more for the next project, um, because, you know, at the end of the day, uh, you know, these things don't come around that often. I don't know how we're planning for things long-term. But I, I think we're just missing out on different things in general because we don't have a plan around certain things. And we're sort of reacting in real time. Um, you know, the, this furnace didn't, we knew its age, um, you know, I, I, I didn't think about oils, you know, tankers and things like that, which is a big issue. But it, it just, it's more of a general statement that, you know, what else is out there that we need to get our head around and get a plan around. So that when opportunities come up, we've got something trouble ready that we can go get and, you know, in the, in the long term, best serve the community.
And that's my concern. Best serve the community is not throwing sixty-nine solar panels on the roof and putting heat pumps in the basement, because we see what the cost of a furnace is. I know you do. You, you, you guys have recommended otherwise.
Without addressing the heat system first.
Right, right.
There's nothing wrong with the, the other.
That's what I, I see this the other way around.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how you're seeing it. We got it. A year ago, we didn't have any clue that our, yeah, we, as a new slot board member, I didn't know how old those boilers were.
Same here.
We'd never had any. I mean, but when this all started, how was anybody, our condition is poor. What does that mean? I mean, could they go another twenty-eight years? We don't know, but we don't want to take what Mike's getting at. We don't wanna spend this money over here in next year, where do we come up with three hundred thousand dollars?
Exactly. As a taxpayer, I don't want to take them like that happen.
The best path is to do what the original intent of the grant was for, okay? Uh, and to go take care of that and put ourselves in a position for it. I mean, it's your decision. I mean, I, I don't know how BGS is gonna react.
Wasn't the original intent getting rid of the fossil fuel and the furnace, the poorly?
And definitely button up the building. I mean, those things are, are, are no.
Make it more efficient inside.
Yeah, so we address this and then.
When the extra money comes, then.
Can they tell us? Okay, yeah. I mean, ninety thousand isn't gonna help get us where we wanna be at this point. Your extra hundred grand to do the heat system upgrade and all of this is gonna be what, seven hundred thousand dollars maybe? I mean, it's gonna be considerably to do everything that in the perfect world we would do. I, and I'm not, I, I'm just getting that, w- we can't sit here and overlook the heat, heat plant. We can't, okay, we'll put that off and left. Even if it's ten years down the road, how's the town come up with, it'll be five hundred thousand in ten years probably. So I, I guess that's.
To me, I just like see this huge opportunity.
Can we go to them now and say, hey, this is the way we gotta go forward, but how much more money can we get so we can do all this? I understand, we're all treading water here. We're not, we're not moving forward and that's terr- that's not what we want, but, and, and.
I do think we have to, we have to replace what we have to have in this building and we have to have that heat plant. Um, as Larry said, none of us were aware that the heat plant was all closing in on thirty years old.
Yeah. I'd never been in the boiler room until.
Is that both boilers?
Three or four weeks ago.
Yeah.
Both boilers.
Yeah.
I have been.
No, one, one is older than the other.
I've actually worked on.
Yeah, they're, they're both aging out for sure. Um.
Yeah, considering the older time.
To me, to me, that's the, the, what needs to be our focus is to replace what we have to have in this building first. Um, I think that the solar and the heat pumps are important as well. But I think that we should focus on them first and then go for the solar and the heat pumps with the remaining funds that we have and extra funds that BGS is willing to give us more.
Go ahead.
Is the grant specific to, if you're gonna get this grant, you've gotta do solar and heat pumps, or is the grant so that you can, we can use it to replace the furnace?
Yeah, I think the grant, from my understanding was replace the furnace and all the solar stuff was gonna come in after, if we had money.
Buttoning up the building, the furnace.
After we'd done everything else, then the solar.
Solar.
Button up the building.
I mean, who, who would've known? You don't know till you start getting quotes in the world we live in. This'll probably change next month.
They pushed the, they made the solar a bit more of a priority because the window's closing on the thirty percent, um, direct pay. That will close by the end of the year and that probably won't come back. That's, that's part of the question.
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we had that discussion about the solar too, but we also were under the impression at the time that we were gonna have enough money to, to do everything too.
Yeah, we did.
So I guess that being said, I believe, I think we need to move forward with replacing the heat plant. And can, can you go at, at them now and say, hey, this is the way we gotta do it and we're gonna need X. What is it now? Because.
Well, there won't be any more money right away.
There won't be any more, anywhere in the way.
Well, we have enough to do that now.
Yeah, we have enough to do that and then the solar will keep, keep on top of it.
We'd have to propose a plan, you know, or what we're thinking.
I mean, aren't, can't, isn't it the same as striking out the other things in the scope of work?
Yeah, I would approach with a plan first and, and just make sure they're on board with whatever the path forward is for the.
I mean, picking the, picking the contractor that had the reasonable price of the two and moving forward with that part of the bid, if that's allowed.
I would first wanna know from BGS that they're okay with the plan forward, I would think, and just.
I mean, if they've approved it to happen with everything else, why wouldn't it just be approved?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think someone else should plan to run with it, uh, with BGS, so I'm not comfortable doing that, so. I think just work that into.
So when we get to the point of this project, when there's money coming in, you guys are gonna just walk away from, from the solar part of it?
We're gonna walk away.
No, I'm saying, it's, there's been a ton of, a ton of work put in and, um, we're, we're, I, I don't feel comfortable because we kinda went in with a plan and a proposal. We went back with amendments. We had a lot of justification along the way and now we're gonna go in and wipe out the original plan.
Right, but the costs are seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so it's.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying we don't do it. The money has been secured. It's there. There's bidders there. Someone needs to carry the ball from here.
You just, you just have, just need to pick it up.
I mean, the, the bulk of the work is done. The four hundred thousand is in the bank. Um, we have bidders here.
So, so what you're saying is if we went forward with your plan, you would continue. So, so what you're saying is if we went forward with your plan, you would continue, but what, if we go forward with the.
It's, it's philosophically, it's philosophically with how I work with BGS throughout this and how I.
Right, and so, this is another one, this is another one of my questions is, are we fulfilling the state's priorities here or the taxpayers' priorities? Because that's what it seems like, we're, it seems like we're here to do exactly what the state tells us to do and when I look at this, I just don't see it as, a lot of it as beneficial to the townspeople. Uh, there's, there's several things that are just added costs and, and added systems and added complexities to our operations that really turn us from this small little office, small little town to having to now deal with so many different things. And so, uh, one of my concerns is that our, we're really sort of running with the state's, you know, and, and not really considering, uh, the people in town like ourselves, pay the bills here.
I mean, those are totally, totally fair comments and there is definitely a degree of that and then last December, when we went through it, we agreed to move forward, there's nothing changed there. So, I understand that our sentiments may be changing now, a year later, um, but this isn't news. Um, this is kind of what we signed up for and we can decide, always decide to pull the ripcord, we can return the money, we can definitely go back into BGS and try to get them to do X, Y, and Z. Um, I mean, there's, there's that and we've got, we've got even a little bit more time. Um, you know, it had to, a couple of weeks ago, it was, you need to wrap up with things by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six. Um, and now it sounds like there's gonna be a little bit of flexibility there to get people under contract, uh, contract before the end of twenty twenty-six and finish it in twenty twenty-seven, so there's more time, we can keep going back to BGS and try to shape this as we want, so.
I just don't think costs are gonna get any cheaper.
Costs are not gonna get cheaper, but whatever, and, you know, we just.
But if, if BGS was gonna approve your idea of not doing the furnace and doing the other things, why wouldn't it approve the, the opposite way?
Yeah, that's how I see it, it's like we can just do it the other way around.
I'm not saying it would approve, I think Mike and I are just saying, that's not what we recommend, so we would just, we would just wanna hand it off.
So, you, you recommend as a taxpayer to not worry about the heat system?
I'm not saying not worry about it, I'm talking about maybe a longer view of it. You get those solar panels up twelve, fifteen thousand a year in, in buyback from them, I mean, there's, plus what we can put on the, on the, uh, town garage and talk that. Talking about the long view, do we think the boiler's gonna crap out tomorrow? No. Have you guys put any money in reserve for the boiler since it's twenty-eight years old? I, I mean, is there, can you, can you just rely on the grant? That doesn't, that doesn't seem fair.
But it's the same thing as you're saying, we're relying on the grant for the solar and heat pump stuff.
And we're relying on solar to generate all this great money and that has not been the great experience of many people. That solar does not generate as much money as always predicted. So, in that instance, I think, once again, as a taxpayer, I would wanna see the money go into that furnace system and button this building up, make it as airtight as you can or whatever, before you do any of the other stuff. It just makes sense, you take care of your big item and then if there's money left over or there's more money coming down the pipe, then you take and go to your other projects that you have.
Steve.
So, one of the questions I had when I went to the pre-bid meeting was, there was nothing talked about, about a blower door test or thermal imaging for certain parts of the building. And I know there's different tiers of energy audits, but looking out for the interest of the town, I mean, you, it just seems a little silly to me to go throw in window inserts in different windows without knowing if that shim space between the framing and the window is, is insulated. And I asked about it and I asked the engineer directly and he said, oh, maybe once we get going down the road, we'll see if it is. Well, how would you bid that?
For what building was it?
All the buildings, in my opinion, cause how do you improve the energy if you don't do a blower door test? To see the air changes or do thermal imaging?
We have window inserts at two of the buildings, alright?
Yeah, that's just my opinion, if you wanna look at your taxpayers' money, put it where it needs to be as possible from a builder's standpoint, like, you know, just.
I mean, I, I know when we talked about this before, before we were talking about the, um, rebates on the solar ending at the end of the year, our priority before was to button up the building and the furnace first and the solar second and then the, um, car charging part last. Um, this would just be reverting us back to that priority level. We wouldn't be changing anything, we'd just be going back to what those priorities were that we had set originally.
Yeah, that's gonna pretty well swallow all the money to do the furnace.
Right.
So, all of those other things are kinda just out there in the ozone.
Yeah, I realize it's gonna swallow most of the money, but at that point, I mean, it's still going back to what our priorities were to begin with though. At that point, we would be going after the extra BGS money towards the end of the projects to see if we can do the solar as well.
Yeah, I mean, the, the original audit didn't really even talk to the boilers at all, uh, aging or something like that, but didn't really talk.
Yeah, I mean, we spent all that time in there going through it all with her, with both groups.
Because Mike and I brought them in to do all of that.
Yeah, so then that's what they said, the furnaces were old and getting rid of the fossil fuel, that was the major thing. So, just, I don't know, makes sense to me to start there.
If you have this bank of money and it's a fairly large bank of money, you normally tackle your biggest projects first and then whatever's left over would go to your, your outer projects as you were stating. You normally don't take and spend the money on your little projects hoping that this is gonna last another ten or fifteen years. The odds are it's not going to. And as Mike said, the tanks are old, you're not bended properly, all it would take would be one spill and it'd be shut down anyways. So, I mean, it only makes sense to do the, do the heat system and the building, as, as he said, and get these things cleaned up and then whatever money you have left over is what you use on your extracurricular projects in your year.
To me, I look at the front.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you at all, Dan, I mean, we got the money though based on saying that we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. Alright, then we went back to them and after multiple meetings, we asked for, you know, the A item, you know, the heat pump or the wood pellets and that, and so, I mean, my, my point is, um, we got the money based on, um, our application to do certain things and now we're gonna take those certain things, or at least the vast majority of them, kinda out of the mix and basically ask the question, is it okay? They may say it's okay.
They've shown to be flexible so far.
Uh, I agree, um, but there's been a certain sort of, sort of process and steps that we have followed to, to introduce these different things, so, um, so that's my point. We got, we got the money based on something and now we're, we're basically saying, hey, forget, forget most of that, we wanna spend it on this. Now granted, we have an amendment in the middle there, um, and again, BGS might, might be quite happy to say, oh, doesn't, we don't care. Um, or they may just say, hey, timeout, wait, what about X, Y, and Z?
I, I would hope that they would kind of look at our situation as far as, um, us trying to work with the taxpayers' money as best we can too. Um, I mean, I think, I mean, your furnaces that we have that need replacing are an absolute necessity. Um, to me, the solar is, is a really good money saver as well, but that's a backup system, it's not a main system. The furnaces are a main system that we really, um, to me, it's our responsibility as board members to take care of for the taxpayers.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think, uh, when someone goes back to BGS, it should also be really to seek and find out if additional funds are available right now, I mean, there may be that money available right now. Um, some of these towns may have just said, I give up, okay, um, and money may be coming back. So, there could be money now as well that could end up maybe doing all of the above now.
I, I can't, I'm, I've seen a lot of grants, I get a lot of grants, I get state grants, the state, and money moves all over different departments, everything. Uh, I've never seen them just be like, oh, there's more, it never happens, I'm concerned about that, uh.
But that can be the stuff.
There's no guarantee on that, I was thinking more of future energy, I'm sure they're gonna do this program again, they're already touting the successes of this program. Uh, you know, and so, when they do it again, we say to them, hey, here's what we did with our level, whatever this is, first, first level MERC thing and, you know, we aren't able to do everything, but we have plans shovel-ready to put in the next steps. I mean, we have the bids, we have contractors that have been to our buildings, they know them, they have an idea of what they wanna do. Um, you know, we are set up to do either or, just to me, the most fiscally responsible thing is to replace the biggest ticket item, the one, the biggest concern that was identified in the report. And I just feel like if I didn't do that, I wouldn't be representing the people who pay our tax bill, to pay the tax bills here. I think, uh, from like a fiscally conservative sort of way, it's kinda what, how I looked at it, that. They always fail at the worst times, they always spill out a couple hundred gallons of fuel and you're dealing with a disaster and it's not something you wanna deal with, and when you have to replace one of those in a couple days, it costs three or four times what, you know, you would pay if you planned it out. Uh, so, to me, I just, I, I know twenty-eight years old isn't so bad, you can grease the hell out of those things and they'll probably last, you know, another ten or fifteen years, but the, just seeing that it was identified as poor and remembering the, the summaries and the conversations you all had and then the, the thought to move over to the furnaces or add them to the grant and then now having this and really seeing, in, in my mind, there's two paths here. I think the furnace is for the community building, something we just need to do.
Yeah, in all fairness, none of us would have expected three hundred thousand dollars to put a pellet stove in and, but there's way more to it. So, I guess, Mike, so you're saying at this point, you're not interested in going to them and saying, hey, the SLAT board would like to start with them?
I'd be willing to do that, but I, I want these guys in the project at the end, when there's money left and we're trying to figure out like the best way to efficiently do the heat pumps and the solar. I, I, I would be really disappointed to lose, to lose that, you know? I have no problem going to BGS and being like, here's what we're, this is how we're prioritizing the projects based on the bids that are coming and.
But Mike, your narrative that you sounded at six o'clock this morning was pretty clear, you don't want the solar.
I, I said, I, 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 we need to go to Chicago, that's a whole other thing and, and I, I, I have my concerns, I mean.
No concerns, you were, you didn't like how it looked in the gateway.
I don't like the way it looks, correct, I haven't said that in this meeting yet, but I do not like that. I looked at the pictures and I, I walked up and down Main Street or wherever, you know, Scott Highway, I'm gonna recall this down there. But during fall foliage day, I'm looking at the building and I'm like, you kinda would take it away, it's just a personal opinion, you know?
Right, I think you gotta be a little more transparent about that, I mean, you're kinda talking about costs, but really, it was clear in your narrative this morning, you don't want the solar.
It was a factor, it wasn't, it wasn't clear, it was a factor. And I, in my proposal, I put solar and a battery at the garage, so it's, I don't not want solar, I see the value in having solar. So, in the proposal I put together, I put solar panels and the, and the battery at the garage as proposed by one of the vendors. It's in the proposal, I mean, I'm not anti-solar, I am concerned about this building and I just, I, I'm looking at the building, I just thought, I don't think we have the prettiest roof, you know, it's not like we're covering up a beautiful roof or anything, but.
I think it's an upgrade, I think solar panels on the roof will be an upgrade, but that's just.
Everyone looks at things differently, I mean, if I didn't put that opinion out there, you would not know that that's how I feel and that's how I felt looking at the building during fall foliage day and imagining it with solar panels, it's a factor, it's on there. You know, if you want me to go through everything now that you're going through, all the different things? I have concerns about insurance, it looks like about a thousand dollar increase a year in insurance alone and that, we don't have any quotes for that, this is for, for the, for the solar and the heat pumps. Uh, the EV chargers, again, I mean, the location, is this the right place? Who's, who is it serving? Uh, what is the goal in providing the service? These are all questions I had on, on the.
Okay, you're not going, Dan.
EV chargers.
You might as well wrap it up, you're, you're not, you guys aren't.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we, uh, go to BGS and we replace the furnace or we propose to replace our furnace and give them a priority for the other projects that we'd like to do, uh, and see what their, uh, plan is, see what their feelings are. I'll meet with BGS in person and I'll hear it, no problem doing that.
And you two are gonna walk away from this if, if.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I won't say I, I will walk away, but I mean, I, I, I mean, Dennis and I have spent hundreds of hours around this and, and part of it is to, you know, adjust to changing things and adjust to changing that and all that. And so, part of it is just needing a break from some of that stuff as well, because it's like a non-stop spigot of, alright, well, why don't we do X? And why don't we do Y? And let's do this and you think you get agreements on heat pumps or solar? Cause we spend a lot of energy putting stuff in and then you find out really you don't. And I get the fact that we're all moving towards doing what's right for folks, it's just, this is consuming a lot of time, um, a lot of time and, uh, it, 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 you know, there does not appear to be an end in sight. It's like, you know, in two weeks, it will be something new or different and, um, somebody's concerned about X and Y, which I get, I guess it's part of the process. It's just, um, you know, the amount of time is, is to the point where I just need to take a break from it.
Yeah, when, when the audit, when the inspection was done and the heat plant was considered poor.
A year and a half ago, so that was in February.
Yeah, so that's, so we had to move forward with the heat plant, it's gotta be replaced, but in a simple way, the heat pumps, like Tom said, will not replace that, right? Twenty below zero where.
No, we won't replace them.
So, so.
Or the, it's still gonna heat them.
So, it's, doesn't it make sense to just, just, if you don't want it, you don't, and Mike says he would do it, to reach out and say, what are our chances? We need to do the, I'll say right out, we need to do the heat plant first. And then after that, when, is there more money? It, it's a simple, when could we expect more money? When could we move forward with, with the rest of this? And I understand, right, that I'm gonna look at those solar panels and like I have on a lot of houses, oh, I don't like that. After I've driven by it the fiftieth time, I don't even notice it, you know, it doesn't bother me, it doesn't. And I don't, and it shouldn't, shouldn't bother me because it's somebody else's house anyway, it's nothing new in my house, so why should it bother me? And you, but the community building, you got nine hundred people, four fifty are gonna be okay with it, four fifty are gonna be against it. I understand all that, but I think we, we, the right thing, and I thank you guys for all your work, you've done the right thing. I hate to see you walk away from it now unless you're dead set that it, it's, because you've put so much time and energy into it and I just don't see where the heat plant got put off, got put in the back burner. I thought that was upfront all the time, that.
No, it wasn't, unfortunately.
I mean, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put just heat pumps out at my house and think we're gonna live happily ever after. I'd take care of my main heating system first and I would do the heat, as, that's my own personal, because hearsay, the heat pumps won't work in the winter, so I've, I've gotta have a pellet stove or I've gotta have my propane furnace or whatever, so. I, Mike has agreed to do it, um, you guys, that's.
I think we do need to take a little bit of a, a step back and, um, realize that, um, Mike and Dennis have put a tremendous amount of work into this.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't even be here making decisions about all this money if it weren't for these two, so, um, we do need to respect them for sure. Um, I do agree that we need to, to, um, deal with our furnace first, just because that is our main system and if some. And if something happens to that, we're in a world of hurt trying to deal with it, as Mike said, for, in the middle of the winter. If something goes bad with it. But we do appreciate all of the work that you guys have done. We don't want to, want you guys to walk away from this for sure. I mean, if, if you need to do that, you need to do that. But that's not our intent. We don't wanna see you do that.
Not at all, not at all our intent. My intent is just to look at this from the lens of the taxpayers and people in town. Just look at what provides the most value, what doesn't defer, you know, like a huge project down the road is scary to think about. I mean, we see the pricing for a new furnace and it's like, well, if we don't do it now, is that, you know, it's something we pay down the road.
And let me interject this. If the boiler fails, one of them this winter, it's not, the cost is three hundred thousand dollars to repair or replace one boiler. It's just not, right? I, I mean, if it is, I'm gonna start a business up. Up, um, so, so, yeah, this number's scary. But if it went down, okay, if we gotta come up with fifty grand, we'd have to do it. But that's, this whole thing's driven. Get rid of your oil. Get rid of it. Let's put the pellet in, right? Okay, we don't want just pellet. Can we do the propane? You guys went to bat. I'm just saying, I hate to see everybody, and what, what Tom said, can we just, before we make any motions and do something.
Dial it back.
Dial it back, like he said. Um, and see, I, I just, I just, uh, one simple call to them, is it doable? And then, and then if they say no, and, well, we'll pay what, if we have to send the money back what they've given, we will. We'll figure that out. I hope we don't.
I don't think we send the money back. I think we, yeah.
You know, whatever, that's, but it, it's, if we gotta pay for two garage doors and what else, I'd rather eat that than, than get to, get headed down the wrong path.
Yeah, we won't have to pay that back, just so you know.
Okay, all right, so. Who knows with the government, you know? Who knows? Go ahead, Dan.
Mike is right. If one of those boilers go down, both of them are gonna be red-tagged. Because they're not bended properly. That means both of them are gonna be down. You're gonna have zero heat in here. And heat pumps won't cover this whole thing. Won't take care of the gym. It won't take care of the other.
So some of it's a blessing that we've had the inspection.
It, it's great that we have, so that we know.
We know where we're at. We did, a year ago, we didn't.
We have the money available to do that. So, I mean, I think it's, I think these guys have done a great job. I don't agree with all of the priorities at this point, but I think they've done a great job. And, uh, Mike always does a great job.
So, how do we do it from this point? Any suggestions?
Well, Mike, Namie's made a motion that you need to.
That I would meet with BGS and ask about telling them we're, you know, that our, uh, we're concerned about our heating system, our primary heating system, and, and feel that we should prioritize replacing it first.
What's BGS gonna say when all of a sudden you two are out of the picture? I mean, what, are they gonna work with us? Are they?
I mean, BGS's turnover is terrible.
Yeah, Grace is, Grace is now.
You've made relationships, you've done, I mean.
Grace now works with our agency. I mean, I worked with the, the person we met here last.
We're just volunteers. I mean, just.
I mean, you're now talking to someone who represents the town, you know, it shouldn't be a problem. You come in there, you're a nice rural Vermonter, a town that doesn't have much money. And you're very nice and friendly and very concerned and, believe me.
You're basically just saying, we don't have enough money to do all the stuff we'd wanted to do. So this is what we would like to do now. We've got our bids in. Everything was too high. We wanna prioritize the furnace.
Yeah.
And the few other things that we can do with the money.
And then is there additional money available? Like what, do you have any anticipation for additional money? Or should we, should we plan for anything coming in at the end? Or should we just go with this is our budget and plan to apply for a future round, you know? And we think we'll be in a much better position for, say, if it's a, if they say to you, uh, you know, you can apply in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven when we have more funds appropriated to a program. You say to them, you know, I think we'll be in a much better position than to do whatever it is that's still on the table. And we look forward to applying for that grant and, uh, and, and continuing on this path to municipal energy residency. And they shake your hand and they're happy and, I mean, it.
Yeah, I, I would change it. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. All right, so let's, tell me that motion again.
I'm gonna, uh, uh, my motion was to, to approach BGS with a priority prioritization sort of system. Like, you know, sort of what plant, what, um, that, that the furnace is our number one and that we plan to, you know, tackle the other weatherization stuff as we go along as well.
I second that. All in favor?
I like it.
Eric?
I also think we should submit the solar, the form to the Shippensburg office for the solar panels, just to see. We need to know that. Thank you, Dan. I mean.
Yeah, I think the other thing too, if, if you guys wanna do solar, you may have to put thirty percent back on everything.
Yeah, that's.
Backup as well. Uh, the, the, say Harbor deadline is coming up also.
So, one place I have in the proposal I have is for solar at the garage.
Hmm.
Cause it provides battery backup, which I'm sure Jack, Howard's got a generator. You know, he works all over town. He brings a generator with him. He's got it. But, I mean, is it, is there value in? I think, I mean, to me, I saw a need. I'm like, there's no backup power there. The reports say there's no backup power there. We know he's a generator, let's face it. Uh.
Well, all three buildings, the town garage roof is the one that has been most questioned by the solar companies in terms of ability to support. I think they feel like they can. I think the other factor you'll need to take into consideration is that's a, a small potato project in this sort of thing. So who's gonna be interested?
Well, if they already bid on it, I mean, so you think like the, the solar contractors, when we come back and say, we only want you to do the garage, are you gonna be like, no thanks?
I don't know what they'll say. I'm guessing because they bid on it, they will do it standalone, but they weren't kinda going in thinking that is the priority. The town garage was always the one that could fall off. So, just context in background. I, they probably will sign up and do it, but I don't run their business, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
All right. Thank you. Take care.
Yeah. All right. We'll move on. Highway departments, run around. Lisa have anything for you, Karen?
Um, she's still reaching out to get, we have the audit contract had run out. So we need to get that pricing before we do the budget. Cause we, it'll be all new for, for that. The town report contract was done for the next three years, so that's all set. And she just mentions a PO in there from FAST to sign off on.
Okay. You're up.
Yep. For me, I, the, the online land records called COT System Record Room. So that contract also expired, so that was renewed. Uh, it increased a little less than two hundred dollars, so I thought that was pretty good for the next three years. It's the system that we've gotta have. We've got all the online records on it now, so that's, that was good. We've been, I've been starting to plug away at the budget, putting in the few of the figures that we know, like those couple. And getting it ready for you guys and to get to the department heads with the lines so they can start filling in their budgets for Budget Day. And just started working with Dorothy. We're trying to tackle the, um, what do we call that? Tax map book spreadsheet. Dorothy got it from.
The map guides, tax map guides.
Yeah, so she got it in one form and gave it to me. I've been able to, uh, get into a spreadsheet and it'll be no big deal to anybody else but probably Dorothy and I, but it's.
We used to get, every year we used to get, uh, a guide that came with the tax maps. And in, I think, twenty, we'd had it through twenty nineteen and it was stopped after that because we did something else with that money. So we haven't had them updated since twenty nineteen. I've tried to keep them updated, but it's, it's a really big job to kinda, all the property transfers need to go into two books. And so I've kept track of the information, but I haven't ever gotten.
Yeah, I just, looking at it, it is handy and so having in a spreadsheet form, it'll take a little while. But yeah, every single parcel in the town, I need to, I mean, most of them are there, but I'm trying to add the parcel ID number, the actual street address, and then changing anyone who, any ownership, which.
So you can look up, you can look, in one book, you can look up the name. So you could look up Fred, Fred Jones and see the parcel information. And in the other book, you can look up map twenty-three, um.
It's Fred Jones.
Nineteen, section nineteen, number nineteen or whatever. So they're very handy, but it's very labor intense. So Cartographics, Carrie asked me about seeing if we could get the old file and Cartographics was able to send it to us. And she interpreted it.
I converted it from text to spread Excel, so that was good. And now it's just updating it from twenty twenty.
Yep.
The last five years of stuff that's happened, so that will take a little time, but it'll be good to have. And then once we have it in that form, we can just keep updating it.
Yes.
And that'll be easy, as just getting it from there.
Cause I, um, when I do a property transfer, then one of my things on my, my list is to update that. So I'll, I'll continue to, to write down what the changes are and then either Carrie or I will update it, so. But it's gonna be a huge project, but.
So, um, that's it, regular stuff happening.
All right, Dorothy?
Um, we did, we did visits yesterday. We're doing, trying to get some fall inspections done. Um, we did six or eight yesterday and, um, Justin's gonna add to his schedule and come next week. He wasn't planning to, but he's gonna come next week, um, so we can work on, we've got three more that we need to do. And then also, um, we're gonna look at the budget and a couple other things. And then I've also got one appointment set up for, with a taxpayer that wants to talk to him. So that's gonna work out next week. Um, Carrie talked about the, the map guide. Um, I'm working, another project that I'm working on is, um, we've realized that there are properties on the computer that have percent complete, but have never, nobody's ever gone back and said, okay. So this was ninety percent complete in two thousand, but nobody's ever updated it. So we printed that. Justin was able to create that list. There were eighty-eight properties that needed, that had this. Anywhere from twenty-five percent to ninety-five percent complete. So I've gone through them all, sent out, I think, forty-eight letters to folks. I've had pretty good response. I've had probably eight or ten people that have gotten back to me. And pretty much the letter said, if there's no, if your property's up, up to date, you don't need to get back to me. So, um, but that's gonna help clean up that section, um, of the, of the computer. Um, the other thing that I was talking with Barb, um, my, the district advisor about was some of the, the issues with updating cards and, and that sort of thing. Um, and there's a new, there's a parcel map program link. And I think it's new, but I'm not sure. I haven't used it. But, um, I've got those, uh, link here for, um, Carrie and for Dan. Um, so you can go, and I'm pretty sure from what she said, if a transfer's done and it's gone through the computer, through the state property transfer computer, then it's there. It's, the, the update is there. And it's, and I briefly went on, and so it, it gave like the parcel number and then, you know, three point three acres and who the owner was. So that may be another piece that we can use to kinda look, you know, between our tax maps being updated every year. So, um, I've got that link.
Is that the Vermont parcel viewer? Parcel viewer, Vermont, or Vermont parcel viewer?
Um, I've got the link here.
They have so many viewers now.
It's parcel, parcel property program link, parcel mapping, property, the, the link is there. Um, okay, what else did I have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think we've, you know, we've talked, since the last meeting, we've talked a lot about, um, the, the photos are done. Dan, Dan did a great job. Um, so I'm updating those, going in and picking the best picture and making that the number one parcel, uh, the number one picture in a parcel. Um, and then just all the, uh, the, you know, all the day-to-day stuff, the property transfers and the building permits. We're getting a lot of building permits. I think we're up to like twenty-five or more new ones this year and some that have carried over from other years, so it's busy.
Good. Thank you. Dan?
Uh, quite a bit going on. Uh, I met with Dorothy and Justin yesterday because I'd spoken to you before about the Polybowl properties. And Justin was gonna do a spreadsheet for me and give me this other thing. There's ninety-six properties that have this. And it just so happened that I had to go to one on Lakeside Drive today and I was able to use that spreadsheet he gave me to figure out whose property it went to. So it was very helpful. They did a great job on that. Um, as Dorothy said, we're up to thirty-one permits right now. And we're gonna have several more coming in very shortly from up at the lake. Um, it's the most I've ever seen. Uh, so that's, that's kinda interesting. Um, some other things, we've had a lot of calls lately on illegal burning, which Carrie took care of that and got the ordinance down to the municipal court so I can now write a ticket on that. Cause it's the same people as, as you guys.
Dan and I have talked a lot, obviously.
Uh, and the state of Vermont is not really active in getting back to us on things. And they send us a nice note.
Yes.
But they don't actually show up and do anything. Uh, so that's what Carrie did was very helpful. Um, we had another incident off, uh, Pinkham Road this morning that I responded to, um, where two individuals were actually at a business because they, one of the individuals had purportedly been beaten up and by those individuals. And the woman didn't look like she was in great shape either. Uh, I ended up transporting them down to the library where they could actually get wifi to call Bethlehem to have her friend come and get them. So, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of calls coming in for different things that, i- it's very busy right now for some reason. We had two state police respond. Oh, that was a blast.
I saw them pick up somebody on the road. Yeah.
Did I?
Yeah. 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 So, for a little town, there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Good.
Oh, that's it?
Oh, one other. Health officer, I had to post a sign up by the Bowls Well, the freshwater. State put that up. So, I had to post a sign. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
What do I have?
You're up.
All right.
Steve.
Um, so, before last year, the fire department didn't have a budget. So we got a budget approved last year for this year, uh, of three thousand dollars for equipment, personal protective equipment for wildland fire. Um, and past years, the state had a fifty-fifty purchase program. You put it in order through Forest Parks Recreation, they would match it. Um, it was pretty simple. But they've improved, so I'll, I'll just give this to you guys, so you guys can check it out. So now they're calling, it's still a fifty, it's not really fifty. They still match up the fifty percent up to three thousand dollars. So I gotta put in a potential order, but it's better anyway. So I put in this potential order, just put prices for the different gear. I gotta list the gear and a rough price for each, for like personal protective equipment, pants, the shirts, the helmets. Um, and then there's the pumps and there's, um, nozzles, wildland fire nozzles. And then there's high-pressure wildland fire pumps, which are different than like a trash pump. Um, the wildland fire high-pressure pumps are two-stage pump. They're able to pump up mountains and hills where a trash pump can only pump up like twenty feet. So, um, with this grant, I did a lot of work for you before November third, um, to get that submitted. So it'll be good because we can get up to another three thousand dollars. But if, uh, you turn to page two, where it talks about the timeline, applications are only open till October fifteenth and then the. And then they'll be closed. November 3rd, yep. And then, so the award won't come out until November 14th. So this is all, the 50-50 program was pretty cut and dry before, but now it's gonna be brought into the January 16th. So before I would spend my budget, well, I would, didn't, because I didn't have one, but if I did, I would've spent it, like right now in October. But the way this works, I won't be spending this year's budget until December, well, November 4th, between November 14th and December 31st, which kind of.
So are you thinking you'll be able to spend that money before the end of the year? That the money will actually be spent?
So the purchases will be made by December 31st, at least, for this grant program to work. According to what the timeline is, the state's telling me. So I gotta have that done. But we won't be awarded until November 14th, so I gotta, but the good part about it is before we can only purchase the gear from the state. But now, once we get the grant money, we can go to any vendor we want, which is great, because other than the state, there isn't many vendors for wildland fire gear locally, so to speak, so. But the tricky part's gonna be getting the, once we get awarded the money, is getting the orders together for the certain gear and getting the POs put together to get everything paid. Does that make sense? So that's kind of what I wanted.
We're getting the money spent in 2025.
Correct.
I think.
I mean, Lisa's not here to, to sort of talk process, but I would think, I mean, the purchases.
I mean, the money has to be spent.
Right, right. Well, this is also a reimbursement program, so we'd have to spend, if you're, you'd get $6,000 worth of stuff.
Correct.
We have to spend $6,000, then get $3,000 back.
So I have $3,000 in budget right now.
Yeah, and you have to spend.
Right. So then I could spend.
So we'd have, we'd have to switch it over to an actual grant line, where your expense, it out, that's $6,000. We have $3,000 on it. Come next year, you'd have a revenue line and a grant of the $3,000 back.
We could still do it this year, though, right?
So the, and then you get the reimbursed, reimbursement document that I send back to the state is due January 16th. So again, this kind of rolls into the next.
So if this is something that you plan to do all the time, then you, I'm trying to think. Better off moving that budget line of $3,000 into a grant line right now. That could be tricky, though, but. So the ins and outs of the grant can happen, doesn't matter which year. So right now, if it budgeted in the regular budget, if it doesn't get spent in 2025, that money is just into the fund balance in that year. Spending the money in 2026, you're spending $6,000, and are technically only getting $3,000 back. So you're spending next year's $3,000 if that's what you budget for next year.
Right. It's hard to follow, yes.
So you'd chalk up this year's $3,000, well, technically, well, technically, you could let this year's $3,000 go into the fund balance. Next year, budget, think about it, maybe about $6,000. You're gonna spend $6,000, but you can get $3,000 back, and that $3,000 from the fund balance will just.
Correct.
Eat with that. You're not gonna see a cut and draw, but that is how it would work.
Like, right. I mean, that's, that's the other reason I wanted to come talk about all this with everybody here, is because like, I don't wanna have everybody see that I didn't, you know, to make this work out, whether I didn't use the budget or save it or.
No, that's good to make it known.
So that, so that you, you don't wanna be like, well, let's cut the fire awards budget, you didn't spend any of his money, so.
Uh, and if any year approved that, uh, we need wildland fire tools and everything else, it's this year, so you, do you plan on purchasing?
I, well, I'd like to make a purchase this year. But it gets tricky with like the way, so that, that's another issue of that, I think. I'd like to make.
So you want to spend $6,000, and we got $3,000 in there.
We have $3,000 in there right now, correct.
So, but you want to spend six.
But then you'll get another three.
Yeah, so, so you're asking, can we do that?
Pretty much, yeah.
We gotta, we gotta come up with $3,000 more right now, right? So how's that work? Well, his budget will be over this year by $3,000.
But will you necessarily get it all spent, even the $6,000 this year? You would.
Oh, definitely. I, I could buy one.
No, like anything for that grant?
Yes.
That will be reimbursed?
Yep, that, a pump, a $5,000 pump.
So get the $6,000 to get the $3,000. I don't know, just depending what way you wanna look at it, I guess.
That's what I'm trying, I, I'm new to this as well, because I didn't have a budget before, so I wanna make sure.
So to make it all smoothy, we'd spend $1,500, or $3,000, right? And it would even out.
Yeah.
Correct.
Then the pump doesn't reach by.
Correct.
When the fire's coming in.
So, I mean, I don't know, all right, so we're not.
But, but again, by the December 31st deadline for the, you know, all purchases must be made and then received by December 31st, so that if something comes from.
So, yeah, I've got a feeling you're, you're gonna go into the next year.
That's what I'm saying.
Can you ask them, if you get your notification reward on the 14th, and you place your order a week later and submit a reimbursement request, will you get paid before the end of the calendar year?
Right, so I attended that, uh, meeting, that meeting about this, um, online, and they're, they're saying these dates are like the soonest it's gonna happen. So that's the tricky part, because it just messes up.
They must realize everyone calendar year that messes everybody up.
Does our fiscal year starts on the calendar year?
Right.
You're gonna say March.
So that's.
I knew that, though, from.
Right.
Um, I, I think I, you can do it, and just, I'll think about how, the best way to do it.
What, right, that's the question I got, is like, since it's gonna kind of be so close to the year end, and I know with budgets and spending, and they can get tricky in time and.
Got something Lisa got to put you ads together on, and, or?
I, I wish I.
A question, just because I do a lot of budgets for the state. What, what is your concern? Just that his line is gonna be three grand over, because it's, we're not gonna show the reimbursement until next fiscal year?
Yeah, which, like I was saying, that's fine, you're gonna, it, it's gonna show, it's gonna affect the, you know, anybody's line that's over. But there'll be lines that are under, so the overall budget will be fine, most likely. It's just, like he's saying, show it. I'm trying, because we can't, that $3,000 that was budgeted for fire, forest fire, doesn't stay there next year. It doesn't get put aside for forest fire, goes into the fund balance. So next year, you can just show that you spent $6,000, but yet $3,000 of that fund balance would eat that up, and $2,000 you'll get back.
For now, this is a whole brand-new program.
Well, I work for the state, so I understand, do you, that comment, but.
I'm not trying to be complicated, it's just the only information I have.
No, 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 no.
If you moved it over to, it would move over to a grant anyway, but, but we, we can think about it and do it.
I mean, it's a good thing, but it's kind of tricky with the timing, as you know.
Yeah, the timing, for a fiscal year.
He just didn't want any surprises when he hit it in the PO.
Wow, that too.
And you're documenting that, that might show that you did spend $3,000 this year, but you really are, it's just gonna hit for next year.
Right.
Yeah, you're bringing in $3,000 next, or half, whatever.
I didn't have, I didn't use your budget, so you're gonna lose it, so it's, well.
Don't overspend.
You got a list already?
What's that?
You got the list.
I got a list that's pretty close to the.
Yeah, all right.
And that will be like $6,000?
Yes. It'll be very close. If, yeah. If it's a little over the fire.
So, I mean, it does say in the program, "Reimburse funds will be reimbursed only when the project has been satisfactory, completed. Invoice and documentation will be received and approved."
Correct.
And I know, in my, I work, well, I work with a business office, I don't work in it, but my business office gets things.
Ours is very quick, too.
They just do things quickly, so I think if you order it at the beginning of that period.
Right.
And re-submit your receipts in the reimbursement form, which is gonna be pretty simple.
Was it Forest Park grant?
Yeah.
Never.
They, I, we probably have.
And even the VORC was quick.
Yeah, VORC is, and, and they were paying us in like a week or two.
Oh, wow.
So, and they have us on file W9, they have everything because of the VORC grant. So it might be as simple as someone gets your reimbursement request, and all you have to do is scan in the system and just hit it. So I would, if I were you, I'd order it before, and then hopefully we don't get that, you know, or, order this sooner than later. Get them the reimbursement thing, you know. Does it say when you have to? It just says, get it by, it doesn't say, submit after.
Correct.
Because I know like, the priority of those people doing the invoices are just like, get them done, and not put them off and say, I'm not doing this one until a month from now.
Right.
So that would be my advice, I guess. Maybe we avoid.
Could I do it?
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. No burn permit yet?
No burn permits yet. I actually had a person meet chat today, asking if they can burn, and I haven't received any direct communication from the state or the commissioner about burn being canceled, so we're still in burn management.
You told me the red tag is the lift, whatever that means. They didn't even know what that meant.
Yeah, the red flag day, like that was the other day.
Is the map no longer red? It's orange now?
All right, uh, update on any grants, ongoing grants?
I'm deferring mine to next.
We're still waiting on, you know, USDA, but the town plan one, remember?
I asked them, yeah, I haven't heard back about that yet, for the budget line. Yeah, I asked them, they're like, we'll get, we'll ask our business office and get back to you. I was like, we prefer to get built this year.
Because I mean, that's the same scenario.
Yeah, yeah. So I did ask, I didn't, I was, it was a part of another email. I guess I will give one update. That USDA grant for the river cleanup behind Upper Valley Grill, the season to do that work ends October 1st. We got the grant like September something, so I put in a amendment request and asked for the entire till October 1st next year to do that work. So that's something I'll have to consider.
Did they respond?
No, automatic response. We're out of the office, it's gonna take years for us to get back to you, we're furloughed, we may not be coming back. So same, same thing with, yeah. So that one, I did put the request in and.
All right. Any other business?
I have one other thing. Brett Smith and I are meeting with the plumber tomorrow to put that spigot in, you authorized?
Yeah.
Or to talk about putting the spigot in. And Brett and I looked at a space between the steps and, and this door here. That alleyway back in there, he thinks that it could come right out through there and attach a spigot somewhere.
Uh, Mike, the locks, where are we at?
Aaron's looking at locks. Uh, he sent me a link to the two locks, he was gonna see if they could find. They're Knox locks, they're like $150, and they, they open, you know, any condition, and they're combination locks. I can check with him again, uh, but I asked, you know, I told him to connect with Lisa when he's ready to order. I almost debated just telling Lisa to order two of them.
I think you should order two, because you get, I, I don't know if anybody else is, but the people down that way want those gates locked.
Well, someone is shutting them. They're not, and, and then people come, so I did the trail count. First off, there's motorcycles just going around. Like, there's a couple on a motorcycle, on a Harley, that goes right around the gate. Uh, then there's people who come, and they don't have license plates or anything. They open the gates, and they drive through, and then they shut them behind them.
Yeah, I would get them locked.
Let's just get them locked. They can't, how hard, I'll get them locked. Fire department's got bolt cutters, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I'll make it happen tomorrow.
So, so I have the locks.
I mean.
I mean, I have, I can, I can.
We put the gates up, we spent the money.
Yeah. The signs are up.
Why, why, it doesn't make any sense, Mike.
Are the locks gonna be Knox box key compatible, or you're just gonna?
Derek, he sent me Knox combination lock, so like, it's like, uh.
What's a simple way to, I mean, none of it's easy when you're down like that trying to do it.
Do you have those flashlights?
Yeah.
That's why we set the gates so high, so the headlights of the fire truck are just shining right on it.
I mean, get you a lock and give you guys a combination, if you don't wanna do a combination, get your bolt cutter.
That's, Aaron sent the combination lock to me, and so I've heard both, people don't want.
We'll do it, I mean, Mike, as a fire department member, I just have, you know, the easier we can get, if there's an incident, whether it's a fire, or somebody's injured, or whatever, the easier we can get through the gates, the better. We don't wanna dim anything, just for the fun of it, but.
A hundred percent. I mean, that's why we set the gates up, so you can pull right into them without having to be on a weird turn or anything, you know?
So if we get locks and give, I mean, I assume it's gotta be a combination, you don't want a key.
That's what Chief said. Yeah, he said it's a Knox brand lock, uh, but it's, it is a dial on the bottom.
Let's get them ordered.
Yeah, uh, he said he was looking into if they were available, but I'll just be like, hey, we're ordering these. How about that?
That's, yeah, yeah.
I can do this.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Good. All right. All right, let's sign the orders. Items for next meeting?
Follow up on the locks?
Locks, the murder. The locks, they'll be done by then.
Let's bring them over anyway, we can tell us that.
I know double nut taking a boat, double nut, that works pretty good, too. So they figure out they need two seven, sixteen trenches, but it will work.
That does work. I thought about the temporary things, but then I thought about the fire department calling up and being like.
Well, I just get, people stop the shop and say, I'm walking down through there, and cars are going, you know, why'd you put the gates up? So we could keep cars out. I mean, the motorcycles, all the others. But anyway, enough of the lock stuff, okay?
We'll, we'll get, we'll get the locks. I, I did connect on the locks.
All right. I guess that's it?
Update from BGS, from.
Yeah.
Mike.
Mike, thank you for all your info tonight, your hard work, appreciate it. We'll see where that lands us.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we adjourn. Okay, all favor eye. Very good.